March 25th, March 25th, 2025. That's a tongue twister. And ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Smith to do the invocation and will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our community. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor Dunn this evening.
Then we'll begin with a new employee introduction. Greg Guber, city engineer.
Evening, mayor, commissioners, city manager, city clerk. As part of fiscal year 25, the commission approved the engineering department's request for an additional engineering technician. So tonight I'm here to introduce our newest engineering technician, Mr. Andy Shelton.
Good afternoon, commissioners, mayor.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I was here from 2013 to 2017. I worked for the city street department. I left to go to Florida where I've been the public works director for the past eight years at a small city on the southeast coast of Florida. My son recently moved back in October. I contacted Brandy. We always stayed in touch. Kind of missed my son, wanted to come back, and here I am.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you.
Well, it's great. I was actually in a meeting with, do you go by Andy or Andrew?
Yeah, Andy.
Andy, I was in a meeting with Andy and it was clear that his experience, you know, was going to be a valuable asset to the city, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
So it's good luck on both of our parts that we've been reunited, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one proclamation tonight, and it's HIV Awareness Day, and maybe I'll just make a little personal comment. So some of you may know, the last 10 years I've had the opportunity to travel outside the United States, particularly in Africa. And, you know, one of the things that's, and I've been in healthcare all my life, and so one of the things that's very noticeable and prominent, that the incidence of HIV, you know, is much higher on that continent than it is here. It's a real, it's a real part of healthcare, but it just reminds you, you know, of how important it is that we identify this disease and make sure that people, you know, have, who have it, have the opportunity to be treated and live, and live a normal life. So gives me great pleasure tonight to do this proclamation. So whereas HIV remains a significant public health issue affecting individuals and families across our nation, and whereas stigma and misinformation continue to pose barriers for those living with HIV, making it crucial to promote understanding, acceptance, and compassion within our community. And whereas people living with HIV face unique challenges, including social discrimination and mental health struggles requiring sustained efforts to ensure their well-being. And whereas the city of Paducah acknowledges and supports the tireless work of healthcare professionals, advocates, community organizations, and individuals dedicated to increasing awareness, providing care, and working toward ending the HIV epidemic. And whereas it is essential to combat stigma, raise awareness, and ensure equitable access to education, prevention, treatment, and support services for all residents to lead healthy lives. Now therefore, I, Mayor George P. Bray, mayor of the city of Paducah, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2025, as City of Paducah HIV Awareness Day, and I encourage all residents to support awareness efforts and encourage a compassionate and informed community. You guys want to come up? All right. I'll do that off with it. Okay. Pierce side.
I work.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. I don't know how many, how many of you know the services that LiveWell in our community, you know, the services that they support in our, in our community. It's, it's amazing they have a patient base, you know, from all the surrounding counties. And I probably should have done a better job of talking about that while they were here before they left, but, you know, they do a lot of great work in the community. And next on the agenda is a presentation on the Paducah-McCracken County 911 Administrative Board budget. And Jeff Parker, come on up. Jeff is the chairman of the 911 Administrative Board. And just a little bit of background for everybody, you know, we stood up a new 911 system this year. We're in the process of buying new towers, and we have lots of great things going on. We stood up two boards, an administrative board, which Jeff is the chairman of, and then an appeals board, which also just had a meeting yesterday, and they are beginning to hear appeals from the community. So we're, we're learning a lot about 911, and Jeff, it's great to have you here, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for having me, mayor, mayor pro temp, commissioners. The 911 Board has been very interesting to start off. I mean, we were tasked, and I know everybody was under the gun as far as a timeframe, but so your city employees, hats off to them and the finance department, they've done an amazing job of pulling this together, and Darren, I'm sure you ran on part of it. I can't say anything negative about them. Chief Ryan Laird, Assistant Chief Anthony Coleman, 911 Director Arianna Kitty, I mean, all have done a wonderful job and got us well-informed, and I think we're on the right road, I really do. I think this is an ongoing process. I think year two, year three, you'll really start seeing the benefits of what we've shown. So the 911 Board, 911 Administrative Board members are myself, Randy Warmuth, Bruce Watson, Mike Carnes, and Philip Madison, all great people, and all have a little slice of interest in what's going on. So without any further talking, we'll, we'll get into this. If you've got a question, feel free to stop me. I know Sandra, you'll have a lot of questions.
I told you to keep it quick.
You caught her on a good night.
I've caught her on them bad nights every once in a while. No. But it's truly been, I don't know, last six weeks, we've been together about six weeks, so it's been an eye-opening experience so far. So we'll get started. Like I said, feel free to stop me. Fiscal year 24, 25 expenses, basically 3.8 million, 25, 26, 3.3, so about a half a million dollar difference in our favor through cutting expenses and just fighting through the budget. Next slide. This is your 24, 25 total budget. You can see the county paid 1 point, almost 1.3 million out of their general fund, the city 1.7. The telephone tax, 195,000. I think y'all just got rid of that, didn't you?
It's the landline.
The landline, the tele-tax, the county was 100,000. Cell phone, 407. 911 fire was 40,000. The interest on the checking account, 9800, and then grants of almost 79,000. So that was 3 million, 801,000 dollars. That was the 24, 25 budget. 25, 26, we come into it. Stay called up here. Our expenses will be 3.3, our revenue will be two, almost 2.9. We'll have a shortfall of 466,000, 470 dollars. That's your new budget for the 25, 26. So in rounding off numbers, the city and county, I think in the interlocal agreement, had to split that, correct?
That's true.
So rounding off numbers, you're both going to be liable for about, what, 223,000 or 233,000 dollars each, which is a whole lot better than 1.2 and 1.4, whatever it was. So the 25, 26 proposed budget is 3 million, 342,970 dollars. You can see it up on the board. It'll require, like I said, the county general fund of 233,000, the city 233. The 911 fee itself will bring in 2.4 million. The telephone, landline taxes are gone. Same on the cell phone. The 911 fire is zeroed out. The interest on the checking will be 16,500 dollars, and so far no, no grant fund. Well, that budget's done, so there won't be any grant funds.
What CMRS?
That's basically cell phones. That's that same thing.
Yeah, that's the, the cell phone fees, the state collects that, and then they have a formula that allocates back out to the PSAPs on that, and it's not, not to the PSAPs' favor, it's to the state's favor.
Absolutely.
And then the 911 fire, so that was what, was that what volunteer firefighter, so we're eliminating them having to pay services?
We're talking about that. It's not, not a done deal, but we, it's out of that budget. So, I mean, that's, I think, you can correct me, but it's what they call the true up at the end of the fiscal year. If there's excess, more, more calls than what they paid for, then they, they pay that amount. So that'll be a decision by this board. But, you know, in a nutshell, the city and county, by, by having that fee is, their general funds are going to save well over a million dollars each, so this is the first Any questions?
Yeah, why is the budget down so much? Why is, why is the budget down 400?
There, here comes the chief, he's going to tell you. There were several different cost saving and, and a couple of different things, but you want to address that?
The majority of that was from one-time dollars that were spent in this current fiscal year for the radio project. So we had several pieces of equipment that needed to be purchased, and that's, that's what made the budget elevate last year to the 3.8. And so by reducing it down, or not having to spend that money in this current year, reduced it by 12%.
Okay.
So don't keep expecting that, mayor.
Yeah, another 12% reduction next year, maybe?
Let's put it right at even, wouldn't it? Put it close to it. I, I truly think that by what we've been, been looking at, that when it all washes out, say in year two, you'll see the fees level out a little more, and, you know, I, I think it'll be a lot closer even than the 466,000 in, in the future. But I think that's really good. I think your people done an amazing job on getting it that close for the first year.
Well, you know, when we set the 91, the way the 911 fees work, you know, is we can't, we can go under, but we really can't go over past a certain, I don't know what the percentage is.
Right.
So if we collected, you know, more fees from our citizens than what we expended, we'd have to give it back. And so what we have done is tried to estimate as close as we could possible. But we came up a little short, and so we're going through all the appeals right now, and so I'm sure we'll have to amend at the end of this year and kind of figure things out, but.
I think we're real close though for the first year, I really do.
I agree. So the, the, the 2.4, you've got, do we already know that that number, it's, that's not an, that's an exact number, 2.4, so?
That's what we've collected, collected so far.
It's an estimated.
Yeah, it's pretty close, but that's what's been brought in so far.
Okay.
For this current year.
And it all came in in, in December and February, right?
The majority, the majority.
It's still trickling in, small amounts, but much smaller amounts. The majority of it, correct me if I'm wrong, December, January, November, December, and then it really starts to taper off, just like regular tax collection.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Jeff. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Okay, we have McCracken County PVA, Bill Dunn, who has requested, I think there's something on the consent agenda that we're going to be, that we'll be voting on, and I think Bill wanted to talk to us.
Hello, everyone. As you said, my name's Bill Dunn, McCracken County PVA. And I actually wanted to tell you about a positive experience that I had recently. It was worth, I thought it was worth my time to come over here and tell you all about this positive experience, as I said. And I wanted to recognize someone who was a vital part of this. Eric, would you come here for a minute? So one day last year, Eric set up a meeting with me in my office, and you know what I was about to say, probably. Eric came over, wanted to talk about the PVA office joining the GIS consortium, and he laid out a plan, sitting there with my GIS staff at the time, and we talked through it, and an idea came into my head while we were discussing the plan. And he said, in, in this plan was, the PVA office had contributed last two arials, I guess it was?
Over a four-year period.
Over a four-year period, which was about 200,000 dollars. And we, we had given that to the city, and I don't know all the details and the background, but Eric was the one that came to my office to discuss this. And he said, if y'all wanted to join the GIS consortium and be the seventh member, they would waive the fee, and, which was a pretty hefty fee, I guess part of the reasons why we were never able to join in the past. We would split the cost of the aerial going forward, and so when I thought about that, so we generally pay about, about 50 to 60,000 dollars a year for the aerial that we use, that we're very reliant on. And while we were discussing that, it came to me that, you know, I could give away our Q public website. We have charged for that ever since we've had it for many, many years. And what you all are about to vote on here in a few minutes is where you reimburse us a portion of that aerial, and that was part of the plan, and as a result, I'm able to give away our Q public website to the public. So the public, everyone in McCracken County or outside McCracken County can use our property portal, our Q public website, we call it, where anyone can go and look up owner information or any property information that we have in our database. And that's something I've wanted to do for a long time, but I was unable to do because we, we need more staff. And, you know, you all also contributed a few years ago, extra money beyond your, your minimum requirement, and, which was helpful too. But anyway, that really, that was a big deal for me in my office, and Eric was instrumental in that. And I can't thank Eric enough for, for helping us accomplish this goal that I've wanted to do for a long time, with making the PVA website for free. Mr. Mayor, one day you and I were talking, and you made a comment that you supported our information being public and something along that line, I forget the exact wording. But here we are today. You guys are going to vote on that positively in the consent agenda, I hope. And so, like I said, positive comments, great experience, a plan that worked, and so forth, so forth. So thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it.
Well, let me just say this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an excellent example of how governments need to, need to work together and cooperate, you know, for the benefit of our citizens. And, and GIS is a perfect example because it's not cheap, you know, and so the consortium is there for a good reason. And so we all sharing the cost, and we're all working together, you know, for the betterment of, of our citizens, not only the city of Paducah, but McCracken County.
Right.
And so how much were you charging? What, what, what kind of charges did you eliminate?
It depended on what kind of subscription you purchased. You could buy anywhere from 10 records at about $2 a pop, all the way up to several hundred for maybe 75 cents each. But we, we made around 40, 45,000 dollars a year on those subscriptions. And the reason why I was never able to do it in the past was because that money paid for two of my part-time staff, and I have to have those part-time staff to get the, the whole county inspected every four years as we're required to do, so.
Well, thank you for being here, and congratulations, Eric. Thank you for your hard work and cooperation.
Mayor, Commissioner, if I may, you know, we just heard from Mr. Parker on the 911, the administrative board, but Bill and his staff was very instrumental in helping us get the data that we needed to get as close as we did on, on the projections for that. So Bill, I thank you for your, you and your staff's work to help us get the 911 parcel fee information together.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, we've got a pretty full agenda, so we're going to rock and roll and keep moving here. So move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read these items recommended for approval unless any commissioner has an item they'd like to remove. And since I don't see any, I'd ask the city clerk to please read.
Approved minutes for the March 11th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, received and filed documents, personnel actions, reappointment of Cindy Ragland, Basil Drosos, and Cheryl Sullivan to the Creative and Cultural Council. Said term shall expire March 24th, 2026, and March 24th, 2028, respectively. The municipal order authorizing an application for and acceptance of a 2025 through 2026 Kentucky Household Hazardous Waste Grant through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management in an amount of 50,251 dollars to assist in funding the city-county annual spring cleanup day and authorizing the mayor to execute all grant documents, and an interlocal agreement with McCracken County for said grant. A municipal order authorizing the application for a crumb rubber grant in the amount of 43,650 dollars through the Kentucky Department of Waste Management for pour-in-place rubber servicing at Kyler Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to saying. The municipal order authorizing the finance director to make payment to the McCracken County PVA in the amount of 49,941 dollars and 86 cents for the GIS consortium's portion of the aerial imagery of the, of McCracken County.
So move. Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, we have two, two municipal orders to adopt. It's easy for me to say. The first one is our city commission priorities. This is, this is what the commission does every year when we go away and retreat and decide what we're going to focus on, and so there's been a lot of work put on, put into this by not only the commission but the staff. And so I'll turn it over to Michelle Smolin.
Thank you, Mayor Bray. Good evening, commissioners, mayor, city manager, city clerk. I'm excited because usually my presentation's at the end and everyone's gone, so this is the biggest audience I feel like we've had for a while on commission priorities. So we're here today to talk about the two-year priorities. Of course, this is a follow-up from the meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the leadership team, and then KLC, of course, helped facilitate it. So what we're looking for tonight is for you all to actually adopt the 10 priority areas and the three continuous improvement items. But I wanted to come back to you, this presentation will look a little bit different than it has in the past. We wanted to come back to you and actually go through some of the tactics to make sure that we heard you correctly, you feel like your ideas are accurately represented, so that we can move into budget, implementation, project plans, all of those next steps. So with that, we'll go one by one, and then at the end, I think Lindsay will bring the municipal order to adopt those 10 items. Okay? So first we have quality housing. The tactics we've identified are increasing housing stock at all levels of pricing, proactively recruiting and building partnerships with housing developers, develop our desirable city-owned lots with residential units. So an example of this is Catterjohn, you know, we have that RFP out right now, so really focusing on our city-owned lots. We have another lot out by the mall that we'd like to develop, so Carol and I talked, we thought that would be a really good two-year goal. And then providing impactful incentives that provide a measurable ROI.
Any feedback from commissioners?
Looking good.
Keep rocking.
Keep rocking.
The next is residential rental property occupancy permitting. It's a mouthful, that's actually what's in our ordinances. So the, this lays out our steps. We would want to review and revise the current ordinance, if necessary, enforce it, and then implement consistent inspection processes, which is part of the ordinance, but, you know, we did talk, there was a lot of discussion from the leadership team on staff required to achieve certain priorities, so this one would require the addition of a staff, which, you know, we would bring to, through the budget process.
Okay, I think, I think everybody's good.
Okay. With downtown and economic development, we've highlighted retooling our incentives to recruit anchor stores and exploring ordinances related to vacant buildings, so that's really making sure we have, you know, our downtown full with no empty storefronts. Overseeing and supporting the transition of Main Street to an external organization, and then making downtown an attractive destination for commercial activity and entertainment through beautification and seasonally themed amenities.
Everybody good?
All right.
Okay.
Southside revitalization, this is a big one, so it's hard to believe we fit it into two bullets, but we did. We have execute a southside revitalization plan by retooling our incentives, expanding the target area, and then completing city improvement projects, so that includes the Greenway Trail, could be Coleman Park improvements, the neighborhood signage, we talked about the caps, and then also providing updates to the community on progress specifically related to this project.
I will say that last bullet point, providing updates, was something that I thought we needed to add because, you know, sometimes you, the, the southside project is a huge multi-year project, and it's got lots of fronts. And you hear people from time to time say, well, you know, there's really nothing going on. I mean, what is going on? And yes, you know, there's been some areas that we've, that we've struggled, you know, to get traction in.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, we've made a lot of progress. So I think it's important to provide specific updates on the southside project because it's so important to our priorities, so.
Agreed.
Yes, very valuable addition, so thank you. With growth, we have focused on selective annexation where appropriate and when deemed fiscally sensible. This is actually primarily language from the comp plan that, you know, both the city and the county adopted, so we mirrored, you know, very closely that language.
So on annexation, I'll just say this, there was a law passed in the last legislature that equalized the impact for city and county, so we don't have the same exact issues that we had a couple of years ago. And so I think selective annexation, where it makes sense, you know, for all concerned, is something that we definitely want to move forward on.
We'll keep rolling. Quality of life, this is a large initiative, so we have focus on high-level service delivery that enhances city residents' kind of view of their community. It's wordy, but this is looking at implementing a new tree program, you know, our public works director talked about updating signage, also focusing on recycling, brush and bulk item pickup, so really enhancing some key services that are for our residents. We also have exploring and implementing opportunities that allow local government to enhance childcare availability, exploring additional opportunities for public-private transportation providers, and then working with Pats on expanding or enhancing their routes and/or kind of hours of operations. So there's a lot squeezed into of operations. So there's a lot squeezed into that priority.
You know, quality of life is, you know, we focus on that a lot. And it's got, there's a lot, as Michelle said, there's a lot of bullet points under that, but it's really important to our community. And so it is one of our major priorities that we wanted to focus on. And quality of life is important for everybody in the community, no matter where they live. So.
Very well said.
Well, really, a lot of these fall underneath that. I mean, housing.
Yeah.
Downtown, southside, all of those actually fall under quality of life, too. So it's huge. It's huge.
That's right.
And we have already begun working on formalizing some actions for the commission to consider in a couple of these items in the next couple of commission meetings.
Yeah.
Great. Great.
Okay. City facilities was another theme from our leadership team. So we have continuing to invest in our aging facilities based on that facilities and survey plan, which we have been working through. And then continuing to allocate money for those maintenance items, and then also future facility projects. So we know we have public safety needs. We have a new parks maintenance building. Those are kind of the high priorities we'll be looking over the next couple of years. Okay.
And, you know, along those lines, I'll just reiterate that we've been building some monies.
Yes.
You know, into our budget so that we're better prepared for the long-term needs that we have in the city.
Correct.
You know, there's been a lot of discussion about a new fire station, a new police station, you know, a new maintenance building out by the parks. You know, these are things that are hard to, you know, really hard to budget for in a single year.
That's right.
So the better way to go about that is to prepare for that over the long run. And you can only do that by, you know, by building some money into a budget to get ready for that.
Yeah.
So we started that a couple of years ago. We have a long way to go, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next look is at actually city staffing needs. So we will be evaluating the staffing needs required to fill our mission and the priorities of the city. Of course, this will likely come to you all through the budget process that we're going through now. We also want to evaluate our recruitment and hiring processes for efficiency. So we make sure, you know, we're getting good candidates, we're bringing them on. And then also focusing on efficiency in all city departments. That's kind of been a recurring priority throughout the year or throughout the commission priorities. So we kept that in here.
Yeah, I think, I'll just make one comment on efficiency and the way it relates to everything else. I mean, you know, the staff came to commission, you know, and asking for more employees. And we understand that. But, you know, we have to balance that with the overall efficiency of government and making sure that we're not getting too fat.
Yeah.
Here and there. So we have to, we have to stay focused on that.
Yep. Agreed. And aligning our focus on the commission priorities, I think, is a part of that, too.
Yep.
Okay. With revenue equity, this is similar as it has been in past years. So developing and implementing tactics to ensure that, you know, all businesses operating in the city have their, with their licenses, then also evaluating our policies around revenue sources.
Can I keep going?
Okay.
All right. So this is the final one, other than the continuous improvements. So what we have here is support for human and social services. And it says, support community efforts financially and otherwise among social services addressing human needs.
And that's, that's one of the ones that I had brought up in our meetings with the city manager about the removal of the word homelessness. So I was just curious about why that's still not included. I like the new title for it, Support Human. I like what it says. But, you know, whenever we had that priority session, we talked about homelessness. And homelessness is a human need. But then I also think about, with my legal background, things in black and white, you know, we're bound to that. And not having that word in there. I believe we have good intentions and want to help, but I would really appreciate if we could keep that word in there. But other than that, I do like, you know, how it's worded now versus what it was previously.
Awesome.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that. Commissioner Thomas, I, you know, we had a very spirited discussion about homelessness, you know, at our retreat. And I think homelessness, there's homelessness, and then there's, you know, a lot of other services that are surrounding that. And we didn't want to focus, my opinion is, we don't want to focus too much all about homelessness without considering, you know, the other things that are surrounded. So we're trying to balance all of that. But certainly homelessness is a big priority.
That's what I was saying in my meetings, like homelessness and human needs, because, you know, some people, like Reverend Henderson had mentioned, they may not be homeless, but they can't pay their bills, or they don't have electricity, or a bed, or things like that. So I just want to have that guarantee because, you know, a lot of homeless people come up to me and, you know, not to get too deep into it, but, you know, I want to be able to represent people that aren't represented. So I just really would appreciate that wording in there for them, for the most part.
Okay, we'll discuss that. All right. Keep moving.
Okay. So then we have continuous improvement, and that's stormwater, trails and bike lanes, and mental health awareness. I will put a plug in for the trails and bike lanes. We have an upcoming, that's really about our Greenway Trail extension on the south side, and that's next Thursday on April 4th over at the Dunlap at 5:30. So we'd love for the community to come out and see the proposed route and give input on any community amenities you'd like to see along the trail.
Okay. Any other comments on our priorities?
I will tell you, once this is adopted, so of course, this is kind of the draft form, we'll be working with KLC and our communications manager to kind of come up with marketing materials and icons and that type of thing. So you'll have a more formal booklet, and we'll make it available to the public as well.
So relative to Commissioner Thomas's input, you know, we'll figure out how to address that. Is there, is there any other input from commissioners on that topic or any other?
Well, I think I was satisfied with the explanation given with Brother Jordan. I just want to make sure, and I think we can, we can still hold our feet to the fire. Just because the term is not there does not mean that we can, that we will forget about it. As a matter of fact, because the term is not there, we're going to be looking at it even more closely.
I think putting the term in, to me, narrows it down more than this leaves it a little bit more broader for other, for total, maybe more than that homelessness.
Yeah, I would, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, you could put addressing human needs, you could put an IE homeless.
Yeah, and you could address some other things, too. Food insecurity.
Food insecurities, right. Food deserts, those type of things.
Absolutely.
Would you want something like that?
Yeah.
Something. We can work on that more, but.
Spell check.
Nothing like typing in front of everybody.
Under pressure. Typing on TV.
I know. I think you hit it.
Commissioner Thomas, are you okay?
No, that's wonderful. Just, yeah, that's good.
Good? Are we good?
I think, though, Michelle just said something about food insecurities. And I just wanted to throw out there that we are one step closer to addressing some of those food insecurities with our garden on the south side. Sister Amy and staff have been working diligently, and I think that that's going to happen real soon. So that's just one step closer.
That's a great update. Yeah, I hadn't brought that up, but you're right.
Excellent.
And part of the, you know, my comment earlier in regards to we are already beginning to look at some, some actions that we can take and bring back for a commission consideration, you know, that's in this as well, is a project that in the next couple of meetings, we'll have some ideas for you to consider, how we can begin addressing some of these.
Okay. Great job, Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay, do you have what you need for your municipal? Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, do you need to read?
Read that.
Okay.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, adopting the city commission priorities for the calendar years 2025 and 2026. This municipal order adopts the following priorities: quality housing, residential rental property occupancy permitting, downtown economic development, southside revitalization, growth, quality of life, city facilities, city staffing needs, revenue equity, support for human and social services, and these following continuous improvement items: stormwater, trails and bike lanes, and mental health awareness.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, we have one more municipal order. And I'll turn this over to, you want to?
Have her read it first.
I'll let you read it first, and then Darren will explain it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the mayor to issue a joint letter with the McCracken County Judge Executive in support of a grant application for the construction of a spec building by Greater Paducah Economic Development and expressing the city's intent to provide funding for the project, subject to future commission approval.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
So, Mayor and Commissioner, you may recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had the GPED executive director Bruce Wilcox here talking about grant application for a spec building. They can make an application up to $2 million to go towards the funding of that. 100,000 square foot spec building has been estimated to cost about $8 billion. And so the letter of support, if you authorized it, would pledge the city, as long as the county came in as a partner, to make up that delta. And as we have done recently, as commissions, most more recent commissions have approved, and looking at like what was out in the county on the Triple Rail site, the split on that was 75 county, 25 city, because it was out in the county. And so in similar fashion, it would be understood that if both this commission and the fiscal court approved the authorization of a letter to support that $2 million grant, there'd be up to a $6 million delta, and that that would be split out 75% since it's in the city, to the city, and 25% to the county to make up that delta. We would pledge that it would not exceed that amount. And then also, as part of that support letter, that any future sale of that property would then come back to refund based on the percentages to the governing bodies that facilitated that delta. And then for the GPED, for their portion, too. So if, for example, in a future, company were to come in and want to do that, and you have $8 million into it, and it's sold for that $8 million, then everybody would get their investment back in whole. If it sold less than, then it would be based on a prorated percentage based on your input into the project. And so there's no guarantee that the grant would be forthcoming, but this would support that grant application that is currently with the state.
This is going to be in what used to be the Industrial Park West?
Mm-hmm.
In like what location?
Out next to Whitehall. There's a, if you think about where the data mining center is across from Whitehall, and then if you're coming, if you're standing at Whitehall looking across the way to that data mining center, to the left is an area of, you know, a large area swat there, and it'd be envisioned to go in right there.
So it's no tax split. In other words, it all go to the city?
Correct.
Correct, exactly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Which is the reason for the 75, 25.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and just to go back and explain 75, 25 just a little bit, a couple of years ago, we were looking at a big project in the county, and, you know, we were debating, you know, if we provided incentives, you know, how much the city would provide and how much the county would provide. And so as we debated that issue, we decided to let Murray State University do an implant study, you know, on job creation and where are the benefits. And at the time, that kind of came back to a pretty close 75, 25, 75 for the county, 25 for the city. So we kind of mirrored, oppositely mirrored that, you know, those percentages when we, when we looked at this particular project. So there's no, there's no guarantee that we'll get the grant. And we've got another decision to make, you know, once we, you know, before we expend the money. And Commissioner Wilson brought up to me earlier today, which I think is a good point. There's been spec buildings in the past, you know, that have not worked out. And so I think, you know, building a spec building by itself does not guarantee success.
Right.
But as I explained to her in my, going on five years now on the GPED board, you know, there's been a couple of opportunities we missed because we didn't have a spec building. So I think this, you know, is a good, a good process for us to go through, you know, and go into the journey of deciding whether or not we really want to build a spec building, what kind of spec building, where we build it, what, how it's configured. Because I'm not sure that the, I know one spec building that we built, you know, ended up getting used for warehousing. I mean, empty or.
Yeah.
Sort of.
No jobs.
That's, you know, that doesn't make any sense. So if we're going to build a spec building, you know, we need, and of course, you know, if it sits there empty for 10 years, you know, you kind of like, okay, it's, it's time for us to do something. But we just need to be very thoughtful as we go through the process. So that's more information you might have wanted, but that's, that's my story. Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
We have one ordinance to introduce, and I'll ask city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amendment updates procedures associated with code enforcement and nuisances in the city of Paducah in order to conform to amendments to the relevant statutes and regulations since Chapter 42 was last updated. Language is added to limit extensions provided to property owners to bring property up to code and to permit code officials to request that violations be heard by the code enforcement board. This ordinance amendment also updates filing and fees consistent with increased costs associated with administration and filing. This ordinance is amended to add a codified mechanism for the procurement of administrative search warrants, which will enable code enforcement officials to enter upon and to conduct inspections of private premises within the city in order to ensure compliance with the minimum fire, housing, and sanitation standards while ensuring oversight of detached magistrate by requiring a sworn affidavit and application setting forth the basis therefore, the grounds for issuance, the contents of the warrant, and execution thereof. Provisions are added to define enclosed buildings in reference to vehicles and appliances and to declare return of junk vehicles or appliance following abatement or removal pursuant to ordinance to be a violation. The ordinance amendment adds a provision declaring illegal, dilapidated, or obsolete signs to be a nuisance. The amendment adds language permitting the battalion chief to act in place of the deputy chief in charge of Fire Prevention Division in the event that the deputy chief's absence. Finally, this amendment updates provisions related to the residential rental occupancy permits requiring annual inspection of rental premises, removing provisions for temporary permits, clarifying appeal rights as they may be applicable under KRS Chapter 227 or 815 KAR 10060, and providing that a landlord's failure to cooperate in rental inspection shall be caused for suspension, revocation, or denial of rental occupancy permits.
So moved.
Second.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. The clerk highlighted really what are the highlights of the ordinance are. We had a lot of administrative cleanup. This ordinance hadn't been touched in a while. And the last time it had been, we, there were some sections that ended up contradicting one another. A big section that you heard in there is the rental occupancy permit program. That's been lying dormant in our ordinances for a long time. And, excuse me, we went through that section of the ordinance and brought it up to, you know, current statutes that exist that we have to follow and administrative regulations at stake, and to reflect our operations that we currently have today. So that's a, that's a major portion of that program or of that ordinance that's being updated. In addition, you heard the administrative search warrant piece. We have that authority under the fire department for the fire inspectors, but the code enforcement side of the house did not have that ability. Or we had the ability to put it on there, but we need the language in the ordinance in order to affect that. So it's inserting that language into the ordinance to give us that power if need be to gain access where we have to do that. A key piece there in the junk car ordinance or junk appliance ordinance is that if we abate an item, you can't go get it and bring it back. So that was a little loophole that we had in the ordinance that had to be closed. So, that was a little loophole that we had in the ordinance that had to be closed in order. Once it's abated, it's gone. Signs has been always a lot of talk about signs for us, but the, we did not have the ability to abate dilapidated signs. And this specifically adds some language to allow us to do that. Think of a business in town that's been out of business for a long, long time, but the sign is still there, no one's taking care of it, it's becoming in a dilapidated state, we need a way to take care of that. This allows us that authority to address that, to help keep our streetscape looking nice. And then lastly, you heard the clerk mention some responsibilities of the board. We had to clarify some things there about limiting extensions and so forth. It's inserting that language to clean that up, to make it clear what the board's authority is. So, with that, pending your questions, Mayor.
So...
And Commissioner.
Is this the ordinance that addresses rental occupancy that we...
Yes, sir, it is. And it's, and to be clear, the rental occupancy ordinance has been on the books for a long, long time, but in the, it's been lying dormant. We have not been enforcing it. We didn't have the staffing. The, I think that was done in '08, '09. They eliminated the staffing that was supporting the ordinance and just abandoned the program in place. The ordinance still existed, but it was just dormant. What we brought back to you in the update that you're getting is the reactivation of that ordinance per your desire and/or direction, and brings it up to a language that are current, with the current statutes, administrative regulations that exist today that would allow us to enforce it.
Okay. I think I understand. And we went through the entire ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And reviewed it?
Yes, we did.
So, we think it's ready for primetime?
That's correct.
All right.
I was gonna ask you to, I mean, I like it, and I was gonna ask you to unpack the limit extensions. And I guess my question would be, or is, will there be discretion? I mean, how do we, how do we handle the property owner who is trying but just doesn't have the resources? So, will there be discretion to...
The board does have some discretion, and Greg may have to help me a little bit with this, but the board does have discretion today. But the discretion can't go on forever.
Right, I understand that.
And, I mean, I probably should stop there and let him interject.
What the intent is, is as long as somebody's making progress, we will continue giving extensions. But we have so many people that come to the board, the board gives them an extension, then six months later, they come back, and we're still in the same place. So, this is a goal to hold our feet to the fire, so we get something done without continuing extensions all the time.
I get it. Appreciate it.
You know, and Commissioner Henderson, I mean, I'm talking with Steve and Greg every day about some situation, you know, and we have a code enforcement committee. We've tried, you know, upgrade that committee in the last year. We conduct meetings, you know, here in commission chambers now. They do a fantastic...
Yeah, they meet monthly, Bray.
If we have anything on...
Yeah.
Yeah, if we have an appeal or somebody... So, we work with citizens. Last thing we, last thing in the world we want to do is, you know, is infringe or, you know, ask people to do things that are not logical and to keep their... So, but anytime we have code enforcement meetings, you know, if you guys want to come and see the proceedings...
Yeah, I'd like, I mean...
And it's one of your more engaged boards, I would say, that you have in terms of, you know, activity.
I mean, I certainly do understand that, and I think this is important, and I'd like to come and see how it all comes together. But my only thought was, is that you have people out there sometimes who are in a position who just have more month than money. They're trying, they're doing everything that they can, and even at six months, you know, they still may not have it. I think Commissioner Smith and I were talking about that on the way up, about people who just don't have the money.
We run into that, and if we can identify it, you know, we have tried to give, get people help any way that we can. You know, we've engaged with a couple of churches. I wish there were more churches or group, community groups, it doesn't have to be a church, you know, that would like to help. I mean, if there was a group out there that we could hand off a lot of these situations to, we would. So, we're very cognizant of that, and will continue to be.
In fact, today, Mayor, the City Manager and I had a conversation about that today, and working on some things going forward to doing some stuff like that with people that need some help.
I'd just like to comment. Is it a really, I think it's really good that we get back to inspecting rental units because there's a lot of, these are business operations, and there's just a lot of substandard rentals. And I think it's, and a lot of them, the tenants, they really can't do anything about it, there's a housing shortage, there's really nowhere else to go, so they just have sitting and do it. Lots of times, the rates aren't really, we don't control the rates, but they're probably paying more...
Absolutely.
Than what they should be paying, yeah.
And I think it's those individuals who can and don't is who I want to...
Yeah.
See things changed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this doesn't include personnel, just as a reminder.
There's no one.
This doesn't include the personnel to operate this program, but with, because we wanted to see what direction you wanted to go, if you wanted to proceed or not. And if you do, then we'll be talking about people.
I'm assuming that it'll be, that that person will be in the budget, so...
Process, yes, sir.
And it would just be an individual person that does all of it, or...
Well...
That would be up for us to decide again?
We, we're gonna need two.
Yeah.
We're gonna need two.
That's why we put staffing on the parties.
It is. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's an introduction.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have one ordinance to adopt, and this is a cemetery ordinance that we read a couple of weeks ago, so I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 Cemeteries," Articles 1 and 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 26 Cemeteries of the Code of Ordinances to modify language related to maintenance and hours of operation, including dates that are not available for services.
So moved. Second. Any questions on this? Carl Row?
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, we have two discussion items. So, I guess about a year ago, we decided to direct some of our opioid monies toward hiring a deflection specialist with the Paducah Police Department. And so, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief and let him talk about, you know, exactly what he's done since that time, how he's used our money that we, that we get from the opioid settlement.
All right, well, some backup today.
Yes, you do. It's a little intimidating, too.
It's good. Yeah, so I appreciate the opportunity again tonight to come to you, talk about the deflection team. You know, we started out with a vision of hiring a deflection specialist. You know, this is, Assistant Chief Copeland and I have had some discussions for several years about trying to bring somebody on to work in some sort of social work type capacity within the police department. We saw an opportunity when the opioid money started rolling in to utilize that in a way that could benefit the community that was most impacted by the opioid crisis. So, what we've got tonight is just a quick rundown of where we've taken that program in the first few months of it being in existence. So, you know, with any program you gotta set out, you gotta have some goals. The goal, obviously, with this was, one of the main goals is to reduce police contacts with folks that are experiencing mental health crisis, substance abuse crisis, especially where it's been proven that arresting somebody or incarcerating them isn't effective and doesn't cure the main problem that they're having. So, we wanted to do this by bringing about long-term positive change. You can kind of read this, kind of the mission statement that they created, that they operate off of. But the ultimate goal, like I said, is to deflect people away from incarceration, get them into the community-based programs that they need. So, introduce the team to you. I think this commission was already introduced to Allison and Matt a while back, but just as a reminder. So, Allison came to us, she's a West Kentucky native, worked for St. Louis Police Department, as a crisis response clinician for a little while, and then wanted to come back home. She was hired as the deflection specialist in August of 2024, and that position is 75% funded through the opioid monies that we receive. Matt Wentworth worked for us for almost 20 years, so he did 19 years with the police department, retired in 2020, had a long history of working as an investigator within the agency, just a very good person as well, and we felt like he was the right fit to bring him back to the agency to be able to work alongside Allison, to work as part of that deflection team. So, basically, once we got them on board in that August timeframe, late summer, it took a couple of months for them to kind of get in, get an understanding of what they were gonna do, how they were gonna operate. And, you know, one of the first steps was, who are they gonna go meet with, what are they gonna do? And so, we established a client list, and basically, that was done based on the number of times that somebody was having interactions with the police, as well as any drug history that they had associated with them. So, they also had additional folks that were referred by police officers, so the officers that are out on the street on a daily basis, that are encountering folks that are having substance abuse issues, mental health crisis. Most of the time, those two things are going hand in hand, so then they get referred over to the deflection team. Their main goal initially was to just build relationships with folks. You can't get anybody to really do anything if you, unless you have some sort of relationship with them. This isn't something where we're trying to force people to do things. We want them to obviously want to get better and to do, you know, reduce their likelihood of recidivism within the system, as well as relapsing on drug abuse or drug use. So, they've done that by just really having empathetic conversations, daily check-ins, they provided some food and some basic needs to folks, and a lot of the people that they encounter, they stay connected with through the Community Kitchen. So, they started with 20 clients, that's a little bit smaller than what I thought it was on my computer screen, sorry about that. But they had 20 clients and we, that they started with, and that was based off of call data that we had and crime data, our crime analysts put a lot of that together. Those were folks that had the highest level of police contact, as well as a substance abuse history. They built relationships with them, they established a support service network, more than 325 phone calls, just to, you know, work with the agencies and establish folks that could help us out, because there's just two of them, they don't have the resources that are out there. So, we know that all these resources are there, we just need to work with the folks that offer that up. So, currently, they're working with about 50 people. That number's probably gone up in the last month or so. We were planning on doing this presentation about a month and a half ago, and, you know, weather and some other stuff has kind of pushed it back. So, most of these statistics are based off of the October to December timeframe. So, some of the partnerships that we have, you can kind of see on there, really focused on three things, recovery centers, behavioral health support, and then other services, which are, you know, like your Community Kitchen, Salvation Army, just anybody that they can connect folks with to help them in whatever way they need. They also partnered with Kentucky Cares, they brought back what is called the Situation Table. Really, the basic of that is, is that it gets everybody in the room, all the partner agencies, to discuss folks and how they can help them, and actually discuss individual cases. Here's a picture of Matt, sitting, talking with a gentleman. And from October to December, they made 226 contacts with folks, they visited Community Kitchen 90 times. But I think it's really important to say that sometimes you just can't put a number to the amount of work that was put in, making countless phone calls, I've just spent a lot of time in the office, on the computer, on the phone, just trying to figure out ways to make things easier for the folks within our community. And sometimes, it was just talking to people. A lot of times, they just need somebody to talk to, and they've been doing that as well. So, I'll get into some of the stats here real quick. Basically, what this shows is, in the three months prior to them working, which is when they, we basically started tracking October of, October 1st of 2024, the client list had about 55 contacts a month with the police, averaging about 46 calls. Since they started working with them, that call volume with those individuals has dropped 20%. So, we're seeing some good progress there. Give you a couple of case studies, we kind of broke it down into three different categories. The first one was a mental health case study, where we had a 60-year-old female, she had more than 80 phone calls to the police from January 1 through about September of 2024. That's obviously a lot of phone calls, tying up a lot of resources. That included numerous responses over there by the police, ambulance service and stuff as well. So, what they did is they worked with her to get her, told her about 988. A lot of folks think of 988 as a suicide hotline, but it's more than that, it allows folks to talk about mental health issues. They got her into counseling and some therapy as well. And you can see on there, we've gone over three months without any calls with her, and you can see the spike on that graph of the amount of calls we were having, you know, 26, 27 calls in the month of July, and we flatlined out. And she's doing really well, and there's been no contact with the police. So, the next one was somebody that they encountered that was homeless, and I think this one's a really good example as well. So, we had a 65-year-old female that they were working with, who'd been homeless for 15 years, and really what she needed was just somebody to help her through navigating some basic necessities, really. So, they were able to get her an ID, which is, everybody thinks that that's just kind of a basic thing, but sometimes folks need help with that. So, they got her an ID, got her social security card, got a Section A voucher, got her off the street, and we've had virtually no calls on her. There's been a couple, and everybody, you know, we can't flatline everybody out to where we're at zero calls, but if we go from having 24 calls over a two-month period down to one or two in a month, I think we're doing pretty good. And then the last one was somebody with drug abuse history. This was a 47-year-old male that they encountered while they were out with folks looking for homeless individuals. He had an extensive criminal history. They established some rapport with him by taking him a care package and just continued to talk to him, and he, they discussed his drug use and how that had impacted him, and he realized and agreed with them that that had impacted his living, why he was homeless, as well as why he had a criminal record. Through discussions with him about going to rehab, they eventually got him on board with that, and then he's been successfully participating in a rehab program here in Western Kentucky. So, those are all really good examples, but they've run up against some pretty big hurdles as they're working through this. You know, sometimes people don't want help, and, but when they do want help, you gotta have the ability to get them to where they need to go immediately, whether that's for a mental health situation, or whether it's for drug use, where they need to get into rehab. So, that's what the biggest thing that they found is, from the medical side of it, it takes too long to get people those resources, and so they're continuing to work on that. Some of the future goals that we have there is, like I mentioned, there's a small window of sobriety, as well as stability. We've gotta shrink that timeframe down, because right now, the folks that they're partnering with, it takes sometimes two weeks to a month to be able to get somebody into an appointment to level out their medication, which is, most of the time, it, we miss that window. And then we have to find them again to be able to get them there, so that's pretty challenging. But the goal is connecting them with medication, as well as any healthcare that they need within 48 hours. And so, there's a partnership that we're working on with Kentucky Care to be able to do that, to basically have like a, an on-street, mobile, give it, kind of the word? Yeah, like a, yeah, thank you, a clinician to come out and actually meet with them on the street, instead of us having to go and get them to a doctor's office somewhere. So, they're gonna come out and actually do everything out on the street side. So, looking back at 2024, we want to talk about, well, what's the future of it look like? This is a pretty important slide, so we had 33,000 people that had contact with emergency services in 2024 within the city. 392 of those had 10 contacts, 70 had 20, 28 had 30, but the top 10 people out of that had 59 contacts with the police per year. So, obviously, our goal is to shrink that number down, start focusing on that top 10, then the 28, then the 70, then the 392, and see where we can go. But that is, as the Fire Chief said a minute ago, with resources, you gotta have more people. So, we do think that it's probably time, we wanted to have proof of concept here of how this is working, but we do think it's, that we could probably bring on another deflection specialist, what we refer to as another Allison, to work alongside them, to see how much more impact we can have in the community. have in the community.
Nice question. So we have two FTEs on the deflection team?
Yes.
So generally speaking, between wages and benefits, how much is that? I would say maybe 150, 180?
Approximately. And then Allison's position is 75% funded through the opioid money. And then we were able to hire Matt back as a retiree contract. So we're actually not having to pay retirement or insurance on him.
All right. Thank you. I mean, that's money that we do spend toward services, toward...
Yep.
But you wouldn't know it unless we just bring it out and discuss it. And also, I'd often wondered, how come the city's 911 calls were so much higher than the counties? And some of this could be the reason for that, you know, people that are...
That's very true.
But anyway, thank you.
And I think it's good, you know, they're here, you kind of see them, they're dressed. That's their uniform, the blue shirt and the gray pants. Just obviously, we didn't want them looking like the police going out there. That helps them establish and build rapport with folks. And had a very large amount of positive feedback from everybody that they've encountered with.
Yeah. So I have maybe some questions to the team a little bit. I'm wondering how hard it is to gain trust, you know, from the people, you know, when you go out into the community. And, you know, I assume it takes multiple, it says Paducah Police, right? Does it say that on your shirt? Yeah. So, you know, people, you know, if that's part of your uniform, you know, they wonder, you know, if there's a uniform policeman right around the corner. And I just wonder how that goes and how you build trust and how hard it is to build trust. And because it seems like to me, that's a key issue.
And if I can add, Mayor, build trust and stay safe.
That's a great, great point. Could I stand up and answer?
They can. Yeah. The safety side of it is...
Allison, you're on the spot.
The safety side of it is one of the reasons why we wanted to have a police officer there that was trained, because sometimes these situations, you don't know what you're walking into. They're going out into the woods. You know, they're dealing with folks that are in severe mental health crises sometimes. So that was, we felt like a good component to add in there. But I'll let them answer.
Yeah. I apologize for putting you guys on the spot, but I think it's a key issue. You know, balancing that.
Yes. I'd say, from what I've known of working as a police officer in Paducah for 20 years now, word travels fast in a small town. And so as we start to build rapport with people and different community partners, that word goes out to people on the streets. So sometimes people know about us before we actually have a chance to meet them. So I think that helps just being in kind of a small town where word travels fast. As far as building rapport with people, getting them to trust us, I'm very honest with people and open with people in the get-go. But I'm also normally handing them something, you know, in the summertime, maybe it's just as simple as a bottle of water, you know, providing them with something, you know, and maybe a bag like we provided with people before with a bag of hygiene items or things that they might need. And then just slowly start the conversation. I don't expect to accomplish a whole lot on the first contact with someone. It just takes that repeated effort of continued contact, rebuilding rapport with them until we develop a relationship of trust where I'm honest with them and I expect them to be honest with me. And then obviously, I'm providing them with the information that we're just there to help them find those resources so they can get better, so that they can, you know, enjoy life. Because a lot, some of these people are, they're in that stage of suffering. And when they want help, we want to be there and ready and already acquainted with them to be able to walk with them into those resources. We're not just handing folks a card with a phone number and telling them to call. We're literally going with those people and trying to walk them into those resources, those partners that we've already developed relationships with, you know, that we know it's easier for us to do that introduction, you know, with them and walk them in that process.
Now, tell me your name again.
Allison.
Allison's face is saying, save her something to say. So you take everything, bro?
We, yeah, we've been trying to go at their pace, what they're ready for. We don't try to push anything. We try to build that rapport with them by seeing what they need, seeing what they're comfortable working with us, and just going at a pace that they're comfortable with, but also trying to achieve goals in a timely manner.
So how draining is the job? I mean, you know, compared to, you know, other work that you've done?
Yeah. It can be taxing at times, but it definitely has a rewarding side to it. When you build that trust with them and you see them accomplish that goal that they set for theirself, kind of gives you a bit of pride and happiness for them. So it is a little taxing, but it's also rewarding as well.
Thank you for your service.
I tell you what. Yeah, I'm very proud of you guys. I'm very proud of the program. And I remember when we had that call with that, with a city up in the east, you know, that had been doing this for several years. And we were trying to figure out a way to take this money, you know, that we had gotten out of this legal settlement. And, you know, people were coming at us and saying, you know, can you give, you know, this much here, this much here, this much? And so we wanted to try to do something that was going to be impactful. And it looks like we're on a good journey here. So we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nope. Until? Good job. Thank you, Chief. Okay, last item is a regular budget update, discussion item. We're in budget season, building our budgets. And I know that John and Audra and Darren wanted to provide us with an update on our efforts so far.
So Mayor, as John and Audra are coming up, yes, we thought that it'd be beneficial not only to the commission, but to the public as we go through the budget process this year, to be, have a little bit more open dialogue in our public meetings. So when we got to the time where we're sitting down towards the end of the process with the commissions, you know, you'd have some opportunity to see the information along the path, could be more informed in making those decisions. But also, I think it's a value add to the public to see what all goes into the process. And so that's where. And then tonight, we wanted to start with the investment fund overview. John?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, City Clerk. The budget season begins tonight. Thank you, sir. The budget season begins tonight. The city of Paducah has over 20 different funds, from the General Fund to the Capital Improvements Fund and Solid Waste Fund. Each fund has a very specific, special purpose, generally set out in state or local law. For example, the MAP Fund, which is the Municipal Aid Program Fund, is designated to capture funds received from the state and expenditures associated with the upkeep and the maintenance of our streets, curbs, gutters and sidewalks. State provides gasoline tax, and the city provides the local match of nearly five times what the state gives us to make the program work or be functional. Then there are other special purpose funds, including the debt service, bonds, fleet lease trust, health insurance, pensions, opioid, which you talked about just a minute ago, and several others. Based on the funds' names, you can pretty easily determine it's the purpose of the fund. And of course, the biggest and the most discussed fund is the General Fund, which contains most all of the city's of Paducah's operations, like police, fire, engineering, park and rec, public works and others. This fund captures revenues for property tax, business license, insurance premium, peril tax, as well as numerous other types of revenue. Now, the General Fund is the fund that captures all the revenues and expenditures not captured by the specialty type funds. Then we have the Investment Fund, which we want to focus in a little bit on tonight. The Investment Fund is funded by peril tax. A one-half cent peril tax was authorized in 2005 by the Board of Commissioners to fund the following items: economic development, neighborhood development, capital and infrastructure. Expenditures are authorized by the Board of Commission annually. Tonight, we hope to spend a few minutes showing you, and the listeners at home, just what the Investment Fund looks like. And we've attempted to build slide summaries at the 50,000-foot level to give our audience a better understanding of how the Investment Fund really works. And so we'll just take a peek at them. If I can get this to work right, hit the enter button forward. Okay. We wanted to give you a picture of, that's what you're seeing right there is a pie chart of the Investment Fund, broken down by percentages of what money gets spent on. There's five different categories. And so we're trying to keep it at the 50,000-foot level. And you can see going around the circle there, debt service, ongoing agency commitments, recurring capital items, one-time projects, and then other ongoing initiatives. Remember, these are all projections. It hasn't happened yet. And so what we tried to do is base everything on what we have seen historically. And moving forward, of course, you haven't voted on anything, and we haven't even met to talk about anything. But we were trying to give you a good idea of how this thing would work. So this slide...
But you had to give us a red figure?
I could have made it bigger. I tried to keep it small. Well, I left a blank line there for you to fill in.
Just kidding. Go ahead.
This slide is projected, is the projected 26 Investment Fund, available sources of revenues and appropriations at the high-level categories. As I mentioned earlier, there are only, these are only projections, I need to say it numerous times at this time, since the budget process has just started. And as you can see from this slide, there are more appropriations than revenues to cover them, usually how we start the budget process. This slide shows the Investment Fund's debt service payments by fiscal year over a five-year period. Pictures sometimes tell a better story than me just telling you about it. As you can see on this slide, the fiscal 26, which is the second column going from the left, will increase over the 25 budget, which is what is we're in right now, due to the addition of the bond we just floated two months ago. And that's called the 2025A bond, which is for two things. One, the second tranche of funding for the sports block, sportsplex. I'm not sure what the official title is. I like plex better. Park. Anyway, and it's shorter and it fits better. Anyway, that part of the bond issue made up $22.5 million. The second part of that bond issue is for the Riverfront Build Grant project, and that was $4.5 million. Then you can see, move to your right, it's a center stack there. And 2027, it goes up again, and it's going to level off for the next 15 years.
Why does it go up between '26 and '27 so much?
Full year. Right, full years. And in the first year, which is '26 really, some of the money that had been set aside by the Sports Tourism Authority, they've been accumulating money. So the city and the county, I think the inter-local government's agreement says that they're supposed to accumulate the cash. Update, I think it's 80% of that tax is to be held for the city and the county, and then they split it down the middle. So in '26, we get it accumulated for several months. And then it levels off for the next 15 years. Now hopefully, it will continue to grow with more hotels. Even inflation will cause that to level off. But that's the main reason. Good question, though. In fact, we can show you, these are the various debt service payment schedule details. If you look at the very bottom there, the bottom two, that is the '26 bond payment. It's like a mortgage payment. We're buying houses, and these are all our mortgages. The one second from the bottom is for, again, sports park. And then the last one is for the build grant. Now, they would be bigger than this, except that in the first year, their net of, we have some TIF money accumulated already, which would take the build grant payment down. And we also have some money coming from the Sports Tourism Authority, which will take the sportsplex or sportspark bond issue down too.
So TIF money, you're estimating TIF money?
No, it's actual money because we have two TIF, we have one district, but we have two TIFs. We have a local one, which is the city and a county. And then the big one is the state. Now, we don't have any money from the state.
None from the state.
Not yet. But we hope to. I know this is a site issue, but we've now made it over the $20 million hurdle. We've done that.
What's the date? The TIF date? March?
Isn't today the 25th? I think today was the deadline.
Today's the day.
Yeah. We turned it in two weeks ago.
We should have some cake or something.
Some candy, I guess.
Somebody ride and get some cake.
Hey, what is the MSU facility?
Great State Campus.
Yeah.
And what do we do? I mean, is that...
Built it. And the city...
We built it a long time ago, though, right?
We're still paying for it.
But that says 2025. What is that?
Oh, it's refinancing.
So we lowered our interest rates. Oh, 2022. Okay, gotcha. How much longer does that last?
It was originally, what was the original year? I don't remember the original. What was the original year? Do you know? I'm not sure about that.
It would have been 2011, maybe, somewhere around in there.
Okay. So a few years ago.
20 years?
Yeah. Yeah, generally, they are 20.
When we refi, do we go and, do we extend to another 20 or just reduce the payment?
Well, usually don't extend the length, but we reduce the payment. Or you can extend it. And we generally don't do that. We try to get it paid off as quickly as we can. And not all of these are 20-year bond issues. Many of them could be 15 and 17 years. As much as we could, we tried to keep them as short as possible, thinking that somebody in the future will be thanking us for having done that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this first line item here, after following the debt service, is the ongoing agency appropriation. Again, we are just projecting, based on history, what these numbers would be in '26. For example, GPEDC at a quarter of a million dollars, IDA at $154,000, and a smaller one, their AQAS marketing for $25,000. Those are all examples. They don't have to be those numbers. They could be bigger, they could be smaller. Next category is called recurring capital. That very first line there is probably near and dear to everybody's hearts. I think it was last year, the year we're in right now, we pushed that up to $2 million. And they're fixing roads. Every time we give money, fix more roads. And as you know, price of construction has just gone crazy. Everything's up. And so we're anticipating that we'll continue to do that, like to see that go up, of course. Next line item, I think, Mayor, you were talking about this earlier tonight, that we've been putting money to the side for capital, for maintenance on our home facilities. We had a lot of...
Money we put away in a kitty? Is that the best?
That's the maintenance improvements on that one. And then the other is our CIP that we're developing.
So that's not CIP?
That's for, that's working for maintenance and improvements. That's where we're investing back into our existing facilities that need some work now.
That's carpeting, roofing.
HVAC.
All the above. We get so, over the years, we've seen so many people ask us for money to fix their roads, to fix their buildings. And now we're finally fixing our own stuff, which is a good thing. And then the last one, I would love for this to be zero. However, there continue to be more and more of these kinds of issues where we're taking unsafe houses down. That's what this is for. And then this last category is other ongoing initiatives. You can see these are a couple, again, we've lumped these together. There's many programs within each line item, but there'd be pages of this stuff. South Side Development, again, I think you all talked about that a little bit tonight, half a million dollars. And then Downtown Programs and others, 332,000. Again, these items represent ongoing Board of Commission initiatives for both of those items. And that's really all I have, unless you have specific questions that we can address.
So this is like proposed. If we wanted to put more money into a specific program, like what you have listed up there, we just need to find it from somewhere else.
Yeah. I think City Managers told me a number of times, we can do one of two things. We can not do it, or we can cut something else if we want to do it. Does that make sense?
Yep. You've got to prioritize, right? Because of the limited funding, and you can only spend it one time. You know, last year's budget, we pulled out of reserves to do some of that. You know, with the investment fund on this one, you know, that is only funded with a certain amount, and that's that one-half percent of that. And so that... And so that number, you know, is a stagnant number. However, what we don't have captured, and this is sort of like, and the reason we wanted to bring it, it's sort of like getting the ingredients together to bake a cake. You know, we're putting it up there, this is what we know that we want to do, and all your priorities that you have, and then we've got to figure out, okay, do I have enough money to bake that cake? And what is, where is money going to go from here or from there? And, you know, some of the things that we haven't even included, that normally would include an investment fund, are, you know, non-facility capital improvements, which we talked about in the priorities, you know, like public facilities, public safety facilities, you know, park amenities, that type of thing, you know, the transition to Main Street, you know, those type of things that we're still fleshing out, and what that looks like, all typically would go under this investment fund. And so those are things that aren't captured up there yet, but that's how we're working through it.
So there wasn't any money in there for Main Street?
It was like 238,000.
Well, that was for downtown.
Downtown. That was like a second-story upper roof.
Yeah, that'd cover the transition of Main Street.
Right.
And what that might...
Right, exactly.
Look like.
Exactly.
It's not in there anywhere.
No, not yet.
Yeah. And then another thing we may have forgotten, too, the year we're in right now, we actually went, we had some reserve in this fund, was it around a million dollars? I forget the exact number, but that was included in the current budget, so it's gone. And so what you see here is current revenues and current anticipated appropriations. Again, you can make any combination you want. The exception is this, you can't not pay the debt service. I should say, it would not be wise to not pay your debt service, because if we do that, we'll never borrow again.
All right, well, that's, I think that's a really good explanation of the investment fund, because when you look at our financial statements, you look at the general fund, the investment fund, and the different funds, and it can be very overwhelming.
It is, indeed.
You know, and just trying to figure it out. But the investment fund, as John said, was established in 2005 by a previous administration, and they increased the payroll tax at the time from one and a half to two, and allocated this 0.5%, you know, for this, for these funds. And so that's how we keep track of how we're spending it, so.
Yep. And I'd also just, you know, would be, like to take the opportunity to remind the commission and the public, you know, was one of the things that we did this year as well, the team, you know, got together and we were able to work with a vendor, and we have a financial transparency page. You can go to our website, and under the finance department, you can click on the financial transparency, and you can see, you know, within a month's time, real time, of where all the dollars are being expensed and where all the revenues are coming in, and it allows you to drill down and see that. And so that's out there, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John? City manager, any comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we do have, any comments from the commissioners? Sorry. No? Okay. We do have an executive session, and we will be taking action? We won't, we will not be taking action, so, yeah, would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1D.
Shall move. Second?
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.